Definitely doesn't like Brian. Yeah.
He saved it for you.
Okay.
Set up here.
That's okay.
Right.
Right here.
Personally, this is in front, you puts the most in the collection box.
Right. Approved the minutes, January 8th, 2024, regular meeting, January 3rd, 10th and 12th, 2024 work sessions.
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approve the claims filed with the county auditor for $522,428.79.
So move your approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we want to place on file the following manure management plans, Doug Rec, Brian Township, Section 25, Berengi Finisher, Middle Township, Section 26, CNC Farm LLC, Middlefield Township, Section 21.
And make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we have retirement of the sheriff's canine and new appointment. Does he?
He's friendly at bomb.
He's right.
He's vocal.
All right, I guess the reason for this is to officially retire our canine unit, Coda, from the Keanu County Sheriff's Office. And just a quick second to thank Ben for over eight years of service with Coda and to the county and everything he's supported in the last eight years. Been a big benefit and want to thank the board for always being supportive and stuff like that. And the endeavors of having a canine unit, there's a lot of cost to it, but also a huge investment for the county for the good it does. So just kind of want to file the paperwork of as of today, he'll be officially retired and Coda will be the sole owner and deputy Ben Morton. Like we talked before, there was a monetary thing of $1 to transfer Coda from the Keanu County Sheriff's Apartments to the canine handler, Ben Morton. So I just want to give that to you or do you guys need to see any of that? We did have, I did have the county attorney review the release of the canine and the paperwork and they thought everything looked good.
Yeah.
As far as.
And this, I'm sure there's worrying in here that you're accepting all responsibility for the dog, any liability and stuff is not going to ever come back on there.
That's correct. Yep, that's in the agreement. Yep. So no responsibility for the county as of the end of today. I just have to wait for the Ivers checks in the mail out to Coda.
Yeah.
Claiming as a dependent.
How can you start claim, claiming on your tax exemption? Another dependent?
I should try.
Well, we really want to thank you and Coda for all your contributions. I know you've been utilized throughout, not just our county, so it's really important.
I appreciate that again. I thank you for your guys' support.
And I guess at this time I'd just like to also present Deputy Ward with a plaque for over eight years of service to the county and to Coda.
Thank you. Would you like to throw the off beyond? How we get the dog?
There's also just a letter of resignation.
From Coda?
Yep, from Coda, so. Yeah. So I just figured that could be filed.
I'll make it file and keep everything.
So you guys have a copy of everything. Yeah, if we can get a photo, but can we kind of do this together with the sure reappointment? I also bought Deputy Ryan Gudenkauf. He's going to be our next appointee for our canine handler. And so we're just starting that process of we're going to Von Lick again, same place that we got Coda from. It's in Indiana to purchase the new dog and training. So yeah, we just kind of got that ball rolling and getting those things figured out. But I'd like to introduce Ryan Gudenkauf as our next canine handler at the Keanu County Sheriff's Office. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks for stepping up.
So yeah, I mean, could we have a little photo?
Might be easier to do it out in the hallway. Can I have a motion to accept Coda's retirement? And then a motion to accept Deputy Gudenkauf as an appointment for the new canine?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for your service.
Do you guys want to venture out for the photo?
I'm going back. Thank you. You want to file? Play a good vlog yet?
Uh, yeah. Amber, I've kept up with all this stuff you sent out for me, correct?
I think so, to be honest with you. But yeah.
If I ever don't, don't hesitate to remind me. Several livestock confinement, aren't you?
What's that?
In several livestock confinement.
Oh, few more. For almost two years with the black tin.
Yeah. So every time they do that, it puts more pressure on the road system.
Correct.
The system national this morning, so we're not following the rock. On the score on a speed rail.
Sorry, I was looking at you. You were perfectly fine.
I know.
So this one, he says this one's you.
The cell.
And then when you hit this one, because this one's me. That one I put in for you. And then I guess two is him. He is dog. Okay.
She can be closest.
Got a few photos too, and I got one this morning, but it was too dark, I think.
That's what I have to do to my cities, there's a lot of good work at night. I got the ones you have all.
Whatever you want, let's try and work with you.
Now, will I get space? I figured. If I do get limited space, I'll just stay out of the middle of my pages. Thanks everybody for your patience.
Next on side is DeSosa Master Matrix.
I went down and had a discussion with Chad about this on Friday. So I think he's came up with a good working plan that's going to even help out in the future on issues like this and stuff. And Chad's got some scoring he did and everything. So Chad, if you just want to reset to us what on our discussion we had and everything and what you came up with, I appreciate it.
Yeah. So I was able to sit together and air it all too, so everybody understands what we're where and what we're talking about. So what I did was, I think the best thing moving forward would be just to appoint our department is once it goes to the auditor, it comes to me and I do the entire thing. Rather than be just making one site visit or whoever's in our office giving you some input and then you score it. So this, this will take a fair amount of time because you're going to need the manure management plan. You're going to need to talk to Rick Wolfco, the county engineer on driveway access, emergency management, all, all the kind of things that you're going to need. But this one is unique because it's really close to the county line. So the nearest dwelling, you can't see it, but it's to the south and west, about point four miles. So you need to do communication with multiple counties, potentially depending on the location. But I think, you know, at some point, make a motion to delegate moving forward, any of these that come forward, go right directly through our office. It's our responsibility to put it in front of you and score it. So what I did is I actually on Friday took it upon myself with everything that I had at my disposal within our department, I scored it. Now, no, no reason would, uh, do I have to say that some of the matrix score that the DNR give this location, I have no argument for, because I don't have the information in front of us. But I went through line by line to, to pass a matrix of this nature. They have to have a passing score of 440. The information that I had put them at a total of 560. So what I had done is with the email that I forwarded, I went question by question and put a green dot that I give to Clayton, besides the ones that I could answer and a red dot on the ones that I couldn't. So the only ones really that I had an issue with was they had given them a score on the well placement of two times the recommended setback. And within my original site visit notes and an email to you, the well is located about right here. It's 103 feet from that corner of the building. So DNR and state standards is 100 feet is the minimum requirement. For that to be able to be, you know, two times, it'd have to be 200 feet. So me not knowing the history of this building, it's very potential possibility that this was the only one built originally. And this was 200 feet from that one. And if this one was added secondary, that's maybe why the DNR didn't, didn't score it that way. I'm not sure. But anyway, that's really the only one that I had any type of credible information to argue the point. Few things, if you, if you did make a, a site visit, there is a really heavy slope from the north to the south. A lot of the culvert has been filled in. This secondary driveway, it's not, it's not an entire U. There's a structure here for composting for dead pigs. So it's not like a semi can come in and turn around. So for them to back to this location and load would be pretty difficult. Just something moving forward, I think we've talked about on any new ones, having that U-shaped driveway is, is better for the traffic.
We tried to set policy and this was actually set by the DOT, but they don't even follow their own policies. Because they have a maximum of 45 foot width and that's by administrative rule. And then the 400 feet is the guidance that was set years ago too. And we've pretty much 400 are real close. And even if you look at the 200 foot, you'd have a hard time getting 400 foot in there.
Well, the thing about it is something like that, if it's a safety issue, making sure that trucks are not backing in off the road and stuff like that, there could be a variance granted.
That's right. Yeah. Yeah. But we're trying to get as close to that 400 for the, the basic reason, you don't want them side by side almost. That's when the conflict comes in.
And again, your email, just to touch base on that too, Dawn, is, so the way I took it, this information is actually filled out by the DNR rep. So moving forward, I'm willing to pick up the phone today and call and talk to him. Just move forward. We're going to move in this direction, talk with the auditor, Chris, and then once that goes on, it'll be my responsibility to get out on these sites. And this isn't something that comes across our desk very often. You know, this is first one. So the last one will look mad.
Yeah.
Before I get back.
I went out there, Matt, all four parties met out there together that one day and this didn't happen on this issue. So hopefully you'll be meeting with this Paul.
Yeah.
To get communication with him.
And I think the biggest thing is this is an existing unit. The footprint has not changed whatsoever. They're just adding a few number of pigs that come in over the threshold. So the amount of potential disruption or change in regards to the day-to-day activities, it's not going to be significant.
A little bit on this issue here, what do we have to do? We need to probably go ahead and make a motion, second vote on the scoring that you did, that this passable score and we are approving.
And to include this letter that I placed. And then I would do a second motion if you're okay with, you know, delegating the duties to primarily be from the zoning department. Then that, you know, there is no confusion on who's doing what.
Right.
I do the site visit and I score it.
Yeah. We might relook at your job description. I know there's something in your job description now, but it could be big enough. We might have to do a little bit of tweeting on that. So your, that duty is added in. Not going to be a big issues, you know? Take a look at that job description and see how much, you know, we need to make an adjustment or not. So I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve the scoring that Chad did on this CFO and approve that scoring and pass it on to the the DNR that this was accepted by the Board of Supervisors, you can't account.
And accept the letter.
And accept it and send a letter with it.
Yep.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to go ahead and have Chad, his office, planning and zoning and to, and future request of CFOs that his office will do the site visit and the scoring for, on the master nature points.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Todd. I appreciate it.
Yeah. Thanks a lot for stepping up. This is biggie.
All right. Um, we are two minutes past our public hearing for the zoning request. Says a zoning request. Uh, Justin Brown. Is the applicant and the owner is Mickey and Vicky Putnam.
Yes, we'll also, and moving forward, this is what our hope is with the new ELC, to be able to present these items on a larger screen than this to the P and Z members and everybody in attendance. So that's, that's what our hope is. So as we move forward, this is how we'll present. And then this allows Bolton Journal and then anybody in the attendants to be able to look at what we're talking about versus just us four. So as far as the public hearing goes, this is for approval of CSN Zebra 2023 025, request by Justin Brown to rezon two acres plus or minus from A1 agricultural to R1 residential. The applicant would like to rezon the area to construct a single family dwell. So as you look, this area just off of Baxter Avenue, north of Jessup, in between Jessup and Fairbank, on the east side of the road. And then 83rd Street, that is just to the north of the area. If you're driving along, a lot of the individuals who've driven this road would understand it's just to the north of the Bay of the Bone, if you, just to the east of Baxter. Be where we are. Amber can bring up the aerial. In regards to the P and Z commission, they did approve the recommendation owed of seven to zero. We did not take any calls for or against the application. One unique item is there is 183rd Street just to the north of where this is going to be located, which is, you can see that right there, sort of an angle. There is a drainage waterway to the east and north, as you can see, does not include any type of floodplain. As far as the CSR level. You can see that they did find an area that is poor in CSR levels with a level of 45 and 67, which that's what we're trying to accomplish. And then as far as access, it could be potentially made from Baxter Avenue or potentially using it from the 183rd Street. So there's flexibility, even though there is a driveway, they're located to the north. There is flexibility to always apply with the county secondary roads. We did include contacting eight individuals. As I stated, there's no calls for or against the inquiry. Unique features, there's a small waterway which runs through the property, however, it does not include the floodplain, as I mentioned before. Hard surface county road to the west and the established ag driveway to the north. And in our office did recommend the approval of the rezoning and so did the P and Z commission with the vote of seven to zero.
Chad, I saw you had a note on here, order will require approximately 100, 150 feet on the north end of the described portion for a waterway.
Tile.
Excuse me, tile, that's.
Is this in the minutes?
Uh, no, it's in the actual application. It's on the backside of the application.
They did add that in there.
So he switched it. Uh, so he switched it to 90 feet, the first 90 feet he's going to keep. That way it doesn't affect his tile lines or anything.
Okay.
So I know I'm going to put a driveway right on the highway.
Is there any other comments from the public? Or against? Any questions from the board?
No. Motion closed.
Remove.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I make a motion to go ahead and approve this request.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good. All right.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, that would be a real asset for your.
Yeah, it will. But I, I assume that they're giving really large TVs similar to the heating room downstairs, which would be very nice. And then if we could pull them up in two or three different areas, when you have a big audience, they're going to be able see that versus us printing out these boards and, you know, not as advanced as this. So looking forward to it for sure.
It'll be good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is the 2024 ICAP insurance renewal.
Uh, back up to.
Oh, wait a minute. Okay. Um, yeah, I did, I do need to pull something off of the agenda. The food pantry.
I made a motion that we remove the discussion, the disposal of the farm.
Agenda very well.
Yeah, I know.
All in favors?
Aye.
And we'll go back and we'll do the DHS food pantry door and the DHS backdoor doghouse after ICAP insurance. Sorry, I got out of order.
Morning all.
Morning. Okay.
So excited to hear your informations, but you're going to give us good information, right?
There is some good news. At, at the end of this, I'll give you some good news. Okay. All right. As you know, there's been a substantial rate change. And it's industry-wide. The $25 billion losses throughout the United States in 2023 did not help this. Reinsurance is the driving force behind all this. Insurance companies buy reinsurance. They have a certain amount of acceptability, they accept, and then they buy insurance over top of that. ICAP has three layers of that. So their insurance, reinsurance is the driving force for all these rates. Commercial rates, personal property rates, you know, car rates, everything is, is got reinsurance built in. So I brought in what, uh, since you two were here the last year as visitors to see how this thing went. So I did bring last year's renewal with me and you kind of compare it to this year's renewal. I didn't bring all 88 pages. I didn't figure you want the whole works, but I brought in the pertinent numbers that I thought you'd probably be interested in. I brought one to the bridge too. This is 2023's renewal. And then here is the invoice for 2024. So as you can compare the two, you can kind of go down and see where the driving numbers were from one category to another. And you'll notice that the biggest jump was in property. That is the biggest animal in the whole insurance industry is on property. What was last year and what is this year? That amount of two, about 70,000 of this whole rate change. Also, I brought some options.
Is there an under equipment breakdown?
All the all of his equipment, he's got out there. Your computers in here, your boiler systems, air conditioning systems.
Okay.
That's all part of equipment breakdown.
So if one of the secondary roads maintainers breaks down, then?
Not, not break down so much as let's say we had a flood and lost equipment or a fire, a fire is probably more common. But if I have a transmission go bad or more, you don't know.
Right, right.
No, no maintenance.
No.
So our unit down in the north end that went out, it wouldn't cover that. Our heat extender.
Uh, that was, we had a heat extender go bad. It was over $8,000, but that was from because it's all life, this life expectancy.
Yeah, if it's just old or wears out, you know, that's, that's not part of.
What broke down?
Right.
Yeah.
Some options you can do to kind of curb this a little bit and you can compare it with your existing renewal to see what's going to what could change. Right now, your current deductibles on vehicles is $200 on comp and 600 on collision. For an entity this size, that is extremely low. I know the department heads, they like it that way because they're out of pocket. It's not damaged so much for their budget. And there's numerous claims within law enforcement. And due to their profession, that's not uncommon to have that. So you could go to 1,000 on comp and 2,500 on collision and that'd save you $3,000. Property, you're currently at a $1,000 deductible on property. You could go to $10,000 and then knock off roughly nine. You could go to ten thousand dollars and then knock off roughly nine thousand. Or if you went to twenty-five thousand, that knocked off about eighteen thousand. All the total renewal. So there's some options there for you to consider. Or you don't have to do all of them. You can say, okay, let's just change the property and leave the vehicles the same.
Those are past history.
Not that for you.
What was that savings again?
Um the twenty-five thousand is about almost eighteen thousand. About right at it. Cause your one eighty-five is your current bill. Twenty-sixty-seven. Okay, this is your loss history. Two thousand twenty-three. Your loss history, uh five-year loss history was um fifteen, a general liability. Six on auto liability. Bronchial ax was four thousand. Law enforcement was is five hundred and ninety-three thousand percent, excuse me, percent. Um auto physical damage is ninety-four point seven percent. Those are high. Property and law enforcement is high. Your property damage had be storms and what have you. There was a fire. Um that's that's in there. Uh forty-one point four. That's not bad. Hundred fifty percent is is good. Get your um two thousand twenty-four. And you look at the five-year loss ratio. Right now, law enforcement stands at a thousand sixteen percent. No, that we have a lot. That's part of that, but that's not all. I mean, law enforcement has it's that's part of that. I mean, we got you, law enforcement all ha- also has one laying out there in the weeds. And it's gonna be substantial. It's a Bentley claim that would happen in Fairbank, a violent suit against the county. That's 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 not even in this. This is, that's gonna be it. Something coming down the road. They demand five hundred thousand. Where are they gonna get that? I doubt it. Cause the person filed suit also had some other issues on themselves, drug addiction, um. It's an ongoing thing, perhaps, ongoing thing. And it was a sexual harassment claim was what they're what she's going after. So where that's at is who knows? Yeah, that's your that's your loss history on the on the on the whole line items on each one.
But if we make a change, um will that still fall, if we make a change on this deductible amount? Will that issue still fall underneath previous year or?
Yeah, all your change in on it late would be your deductible. It has no bearing on on past years' loss ratio.
Wouldn't like to lot to drop the law enforcement, but I sure would like to take a look at the property. Your thoughts, John?
I would, I'd agree because you're gonna continually have law enforcement issues. If they're out in the country, you're gonna be getting beer and everything else. Well, you know, I we signed the commitment form way back right for you doing the commitment form gave us thirty days grace here. That's what we did. This renewal was January first. But it was late and ICAP was a little bit late on getting information out, even the the supplement that I give Chris to go through with the department heads to make sure all the equipment's in order. Vehicles are in order, properties in order. And part of your property too is ICAP did an inflationary adjustment on all property of ten percent. And the members were asking for that. Because of the inflation of construction today, it's just kind of hard to keep up with. So that helped adjust your property. So even though you have a rate change in here, you are getting something for your money here. Coverages did go up on all buildings. I mean, the Rydell building was a major purchase, major remodel, and I had ICAP um loss control come in and do an evaluation on that building to make sure we had the right amount of insurance on that thing. So that's that was done and that was done last summer. So that's built in this thing too. This thing, the Rydell building wasn't on this last year because you had just purchased it. So now we're adding it to two thousand twenty-four. Part of two thousand twenty-three was you received a supplemental bill on it. But two thousand twenty-four, the full renewal is on that for that Rydell building. But if uh going back to the commitment form. We no more sent that commitment form in and the sheriff's department had an accident. So we got, it's, it was, I was glad we got that sent in. Cause that bought us a month here.
What are your thoughts, Clayton?
Well, I I think this uh deductible amount on the two hundred comp and six hundred collision and stuff. We make a change there, that's that's only a three thousand dollar change. That's kind of somewhat minimal nest for the vehicles and
Right.
and stuff and everything that look we're just talking about. Uh an accident from happening out there with a deputy or something like that, I think are the most serious look we need to take here is the property coverage deductibles. That's a significant amount of money there. And what was the total on that from going from a thousand to twenty-five?
Here, one eighty-five, eight sixty now. On property, if you go to twenty-five thousand, that's one sixty-seven, eight sixty. So that's roughly eighteen thousand dollars.
Ten thousand, so.
Nine.
Nine. Houses kind of pretty much driven stage renewal or?
It is on a commercial. I mean, I got a thousand dollar deductible on my house. You know, and now you're looking at, I mean, you're looking at property coverage of forty-eight million dollars here. You know, um they got a two percent deductible bill in there too for for two thousand and four renewal. Now, that would only applies if there would be a twenty-five million dollar loss determined in one area. And that would be determined by ISO, Insurance Service Office. So if there's not a twenty-five million dollar loss in the area, then your standard deductibles, what you pick is going to apply. And the and that uh two to two percent is only on wind and hail. It's not on like fire. Or backed through a garage door accidentally. And that's happened. Maintainers, dump trucks.
Twenty-five, but I I would, I'm thinking of thought about the ten.
I was thinking about the twenty-five.
And two.
So if something happens like John said, uh you know, right now we can budget in our premium costs. We can't budget, we're not budgeting in the unknowns if something happens. If something happens, where's twenty-five coming from? Where are you gonna pull that? Where are you gonna get it?
Can we? Can we keep the twenty, can we always make sure that there's twenty-five in a capital improvement? Can we use that? We couldn't use that?
It's not a capital improvement.
No.
I mean, I agree, I would like to see some savings, but as far as trying to budget an extra ten thousand dollars or twenty-five thousand if an incident happens. I mean, that's a crap shoot.
That's what I'm worried about. The what if?
Well, you can take a look at your, take a look at your private loss ratio, okay? And let's just go down to the property in itself. Property itself over five years is at forty-three percent. That's still pretty good. For property.
Right. And wasn't that some of that the fire at the annex, the old annex that we got rid of?
Mm-hmm. It's built in there. Whatever happened last five years is part of that.
I lost part of the roof about by Hazelton too from a storm. Probably within the past five years.
Right.
And if we gotta if something happens, I'm gonna use secondary roads for instance, something happens there, I mean you know, I'll to handle the deductible with a larger department. Kind of easier to come up with ten thousand or something like that versus twenty-five thousand. Is all you can be.
Your thoughts, Brian?
I can, I can go with whatever the, well, you guys want, however you want to handle it to courthouse because I do keep stuff in there because if I have door openers go bad and such, you can get a lot, create a lot of money tied up. Yeah, little things. So in the buildings and grounds. Yeah, I can usually cover that. So it's really however you guys can handle it to courthouse.
We can cover either way.
I can cover it either way.
And you do have buildings all over this county. You know?
Yeah.
I mean, just for example, last last spring, last winter, winter. You know, a small tornado, for lack of better terminology, screwed up the lagoon. Now that only affected that area. Well, Brian would have had a building, which he does have a building over there. But it didn't affect the building. It was all part of South Town. Was where it hit. It was fifty thousand dollar loss, okay? So that was just one area. So when you look at the broad scheme of things of where all your buildings are in the county. I mean, if we could have a jury show come through here and and hit Jessup and Inapentance and Winthrop, you know, like it did down Lynn County. But he still got buildings up around Hazelton. Down to um Brandon. Brandon.
Raleigh.
Raleigh, Kwaski. Aurora, Lamont. So your your buildings are scattered around. Until we get in proxy elk here in town. Courthouse, Rydell Building. Food pantry building.
Our biggest.
Senior.
Right here.
Senior Center building, right?
That's the biggest name, but if we do have something happen, you know, it's easier to budget these premium costs, but to budget the unknown. You know, uh if something had does happen, we gotta, we go with the twenty-five thousand. Where's that twenty-five thousand and a half in that? Where's that deductible amount gonna come from?
Mm-hmm. I mean, you had four storms. I agree. An eighteen thousand looks really good, but uh if we could figure out a way to find ten thousand dollars easier than we could twenty.
Hmm. And if it's more, if it's multiple events like John said, you know, and the whole stack. I I've kind of taken, say nine by going at with ten. And we want to do these separate layers. What are you looking at uh as far as a vehicle, the twenty to two hundred comp and six hundred collision, do we want to go to the thousand, twenty-five hundred? And save three thousand dollars there? Then between the two of them, you're saving twelve thousand on premium cost. Do you want to do them both or just one or the other?
I would just do one or the other. I would just do, I would leave uh comp and collision where it's at for vehicles.
I tend to agree with that also. Okay, I'll make a motion then that uh you change the deductible then uh to ten thousand dollars on property. And not do anything with the see the other one as is.
I second that.
All in favor?
Alright.
Aye.
Thanks for doing the research on that, John.
Yeah, appreciate it.
No problem.
Thanks for bringing a little bit of good news.
Oh, that's good new, better good news coming here.
Oh, good.
Yeah. Okay, um real fast, I'll have to send him, I'll send it to him today, I'll send a revised invoice, alright? The change we're making today. Um he asked me about it the other day. Ethan, the writer, by the way, in case you're hearing me talk about Tim. And then he'll, he'll probably get that to me either today or tomorrow. So I'll get that to you so you'll have the right writing invoice.
Yeah, um and like I told you when we visited earlier, probably what I'll do is do a separate check line just so we can get it.
Yeah. We are. Okay, on a lighter notes.
Didn't it?
Yeah. Your work comp. Your work comp. This county historically has been extremely good when it comes to work comp. They had a couple of bad years here a while back. But by and large, Buchanan County has about the lowest mod factor in the state when it comes to counties. So your mod factor as of our last meeting and um our um loss control rep was here for IMWCA. And it was point eight nine. Uh anytime your mod factor is under one oh, it's good. And there's this big discount. And I IMWCA gives you a large discount to begin with, and now you start punching down a mod factor of point eight nine, that's that's exceptional. And it's looking like your July renewal laying out yet. But there's a good possibility when you get your July renewal, it's gonna be better yet. I mean, this thing could go down to a point eight oh. Because of your, because of your, it goes on a three-year rolling scale is how work comp is factored in. And so you got a bill for ten thousand dollars here this year for an audit. But your payroll went up. So when your payroll goes up, your work comp exposure goes up. And that's just how work comp works.
Right.
And you give a department a raise. Then that factors into your work, work comp cost too. Or if maybe the sheriff's department hires somebody. That goes into the audit because it wasn't part of the estimated amount when the policy was started. So if I can give you any good signs of your work comp is gonna help offset this whole dropping cash, you think.
Now, in the case of an injury or something like that, I mean, still, is that still a sixty percent view? But the per- that the individual's injured and off work.
Oh, as far as what they get?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's still a sixty percent.
Yeah, yeah, how that worked, how that goes didn't change at all. Just just the, your mod factor went down. So.
This all reflection on our employees.
Absolutely.
You know.
Absolutely.
And that's why we've had some discussions that are safety, meaning what we can do to recognize these employees for being so safe.
Now, I know in private sector, workers comp. They used to always, if you had an accident, they'd set aside a reserve. Do they do that? I feel like this. Yeah. Yeah, work comp is pretty much the language on work comp is pretty standard. No matter if it's on a private sector or a commercial line, it's pretty standard language.
And what's the news?
Very good.
Is there any questions, Juan?
I'm just convinced the state now that uh it can allow us to increase our budgets by ten or fifteen percent, we've been great all cotton. And they limit you to two percent, it's pretty tough.
Yeah. And there are efforts through the legislature to to make the lost, look, option, sales tax a state thing and take that away from the counties. And that legislation's been resubmitted, or it's in committee, I should say. So John, yeah, yeah, that that we know how it works when they say they'll hold you harmless, they do that for a year or two and then then they find needs that they want to address.
But we was told by a legislature that that's still same mod would be reimbursed, they weren't gonna take any.
That's the whole harmless issue, and that works for a year or two.
I read on this wonderful magazine. Ions for tax relief does the local governments foolishly waste all their money.
They don't open doors.
Yeah. Any more questions for me?
I believe so.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Yep. Stay warm.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Next week's gonna be in the thirties, I mean, what?
So all the stuff's gonna melt. And refreeze. And we'll get no more snow, then it'll melt again. It's a vicious cycle.
The whole voice is raised.
She's in the hospital again.
Oh, no, my God.
Yeah, yeah. Sodium levels low and, and, uh. She's not tracking very good and so. Got out of ICU yesterday.
Oh, good. At ICU.
Yeah, yeah. So.
Well, good luck.
Truck down there, down, see how things are going. Best wishes.
Yeah.
Take care.
See you, John.
Thank you.
Alright, um, let's go back to the DHS food pantry door. I mean DHS that dog house and door. Was that on? The sheet?
No, it wasn't. No, it's not here.
That the one you got from hell, I guess?
Yes, it is.
No, it's not on here.
Okay, I don't.
Or did it see?
Yes. Clayton. Don, Chris. I just ordered the DHS building repairs.
Happy spring.
What do you want?
Four of them, I wouldn't give one to Chris.
Don't know where I put that.
I forgot, I forgot one coming in.
There's two different, uh. What you got here, I just didn't click the. DHS building instead of the senior center. Anyone?
So to remove. The shed and external, install an exterior door, the interior door. Frame and interior door. Drywall and mud. Along with, um, the price of his doors. Looks like the material comes to one thousand eight hundred sixty-eight dollars and twenty-two cents. Labor comes to two thousand three hundred and thirty dollars for a total estimate of four thousand two hundred dollars and twenty-two cents.
Take care of disposing the. Material that's. Okay. Cause they didn't have that listed on here, we should make sure that. That can be a cost if they're just not gonna leave it later in the pile, we gotta.
No, he, he took, no, he won't leave it later than a thousand.
Well, this is no doubt, I mean, this. This must have get done because it's rotten, it variation and someday that door could just fall off there.
Making this money.
Well, I think we gotta balance enough and I, I understand this, looks like it's forty-two hundred. We could do this in the general services, uh. Improvement line.
I have the improvement line. Or you can use our butt lines for it.
I think we've got room to do a few smaller projects and stuff. We got some money left in there for the fiscal years.
Well, remember we have that hundred and six thousand that I gotta come up with and find that tree.
Yeah. And we're gonna need some of that.
And I'm sure that.
Sure that you'll see.
Yeah. No, it's not the match, it's the bill because we have not got the grant funds. So I'm guessing that whole. Project is going to have to be paid. Before we get any type of reimbursement and we don't have that in the budget.
Well, we might have to wait until we do this, until we get that reimbursement back.
Or we can always do it out of. ARPA and just be down with it. One way or another. Cause we were gonna do the EOC center out of the ARPA funds and we were told that we couldn't. So then we had to start. Switching that to capital improvements. Gentlemen's call.
Well, we got. What'd they say to get that reimbursement back? What, I thought Chris did. Eric did checking on that, he thought that would be a two to three week turnaround, I don't. What did he kind of?
I sent an email a week ago and I have not heard anything, so I, I don't know what the turnaround is on it.
Let me see if I can find it.
And maybe he has heard something and it just hasn't had a chance to get back with me yet, I don't know.
Did he ensure it with you? I know that he turned the bill, he already submitted the bill in and then, and I told him that you would get him the backup paper to go along. He's already turned in for it.
I haven't issued a check yet because I haven't figured out where I'm coming up with a hundred and six thousand yet. I know we, when we were going through budgets last week. There was funding available in the capital improvements fund, but that's gonna wipe it out except for like twenty-some thousand dollars.
Yeah, cause I think we were, I'm, I'm guessing I thought we had about one forty or something there. We take one oh six away from that. Which would be forty-two hundred, would still be alright at forty-two hundred. So still have enough there in that balance to.
And that would be a temporary thing until the check comes in and they reimburse back.
But even we're writing a check for six, we're still not gonna bust the bank because there's still gonna be twenty-some thousand. Left there and we got forty-two hundred, we're talking about here.
You won't get the full hundred and six back, you'll get everything back with the match. Maybe you'll get eighty-five percent of it back or whatever.
Right.
They'll keep their. Match.
Okay, so I'm just, so I'm understanding this right. The whole bid for the project was like two ninety-four. The county had to do the match of the seventy or it was like sixty-eight thousand.
Mm-hmm.
So they're deducting that match as they reimburse the county?
Yes.
Okay.
Cause we never gave them funds to begin with.
Okay, so because initially we were to give the funds or pay for part of that project, that sixty-eight thousand or whatever it was. Okay, so that's different than. What I knew, okay. So basically out of the whole project, the two hundred ninety-four thousand, they're gonna deduct like the sixty-eight thousand. Whatever it was, as they reimburse the county, as we front the money.
Yeah.
For the project.
That's my understanding. Still gotta balance here for this forty-two hundred, even after that one oh six paid back. Cause we're not, well, one oh six will be paid back, but even. A smaller amount. If we just, we even get. Any of it back, we're still gonna be alright with this forty-two hundred expenditure on the capital improvement part.
And if you guys recall, last year you budgeted about approximately a hundred and fifty thousand for improvements and you've only spent nineteen something, something on that. So that's also a line item it could come out of instead of. Taking more out of that specific capital improvement fund. Because it's easier to budget that line item than it is to constantly put money into the capital improvements fund.
Since part of this is interior work, you think he's gonna wanna jump on it right away or is it something that he's gonna have to put on a schedule? That doghouse is gonna be all exterior work.
Um. Well, he'll put it on a schedule, it'll be. I don't think he's gonna jump on it right away. Not in this weather.
We do this. With him, could we also use him to install that gutter above the. Entry door leak. We have all the water running on it. Add to it.
But we don't know what that cost is gonna be.
Right, I know, which it is, but it shouldn't be.
And here again, you know. We wanna go that full length of that wall back to the corner? Or do we just wanna do above the doorway here?
I think you probably wanna do the whole length of the whole thing, but it shouldn't because it's all gonna go into that one. If you're still above the door, then you still have all the rest of it coming down into that.
But you're gonna have more coming off that roof, get down there, running down there. Freeze back up. If you're trying to drain all that water, you're gonna have to drain all that water in that direction out. To the parking.
I would suggest.
You don't wanna put it back in the corner.
Like eight to ten feet. Cover your loading area there. Doorway.
See, if you drain, if you drain, if you try and drain that whole thing, see what I'm saying? If you got what, the right weather conditions, you can have a major. Backup freeze happening, clear back to that corner. We just do above the door, we only gotta worry about that and. It's about better possible. And that's the only place for our issues at.
Okay.
Right.
So we just cover that dock area.
Alright. Make a motion if we proceed with the doghouse.
Using general services dollars, yes.
And the interior door between the DHS and food pantry.
I will second that.
That's all part of that.
Do you wanna add? Get a price for the gutter too?
We don't know. We can do it later time.
Okay.
So we'll go up there in the gutter at this time.
So I got a first and a second?
Yep.
All in favor?
Alright.
Aye.
Madam Mayor, or Chairman?
Yes?
Oh. Should, can we possibly go to the Austin Bridge Inspection and then them gentlemen can leave?
Yes.
Which do?
Yep.
Where they can stay here the whole duration?
I.
Sure they got things to do?
Yeah.
That'll be fine.
What we'd like to do is enter into an agreement like Independence is with the county could do and you guys bill us for the bridge inspection. That we talked about blackening a little bit. If you do that.
And this is something we should not have to reinvent the word wording. We should just be able to. Opt in.
Yeah, only the one thing, and I wouldn't have to drop that even in this one, but with the city of Independence, we have a cap on it. And I have informed the mayor, there's rumors out there right now, federal highway is trying to change the program. And add a whole lot more requirements on the bridge inspections. Which will require more time. But, but we're still, even though.
There's still a lot cheaper.
Yeah, no matter what.
Yeah, that's right. Is your, are you, you're due for inspection this year?
Well. It's, it was supposed to be done and it got forgotten. So we, they were supposed to do it, but I haven't seen the report. And Sarah hasn't got the report, so I don't know whether they did it or not. They're, we're gonna get a hold of this week.
Who is they?
Whoever was doing it before, that, I don't know who, who used, I don't know.
I have no idea who the city of Kowalski was, they had a hop side firm apparently hired.
Yeah, yeah. And they were supposed to put us on schedule to do it every year when they just, and then somehow got forgotten.
Then we don't know if you're under, under the gun to get it done this year or not.
Well, I, we're not worried about this year, we're worried about next year anyway. By the time we do the twenty-eighty and all that, see if they, they can get done next year.
Is it acceptable to proceed with the, I haven't shared it or anything? I would say it is, we said a president, so. You know, and there's not that.
Change the wording from the city of Independence?
And then, you know, like you said, do we wanna change?
Drop the cap, drop the cap off because. And, and I kinda gave Brad a heads up and. We may be notified that we're gonna be dropping the cap off in the future too. We don't know what's going on with federal highway. This came about. I was emailed Friday, Thursday afternoon late about. Some new rules coming out from federal highway. And what is it, seventy-five bucks an hour or something like that?
Yes.
That's still way cheaper than paying. I mean, you could sit down there all day. Certainly. Yeah. We know that bridge well too.
Well, I think.
It was one we built, helped build.
I think consensus then is we just. Move forward and then when it's done, the capture moved in, it can come back to final approval.
And then, um, are you gonna have county attorney review it before it is approved?
I would totally think so. The county attorney would need to.
Did your county attorney do independence already?
Yes.
Did independence already, we just need to make sure that.
Waste money doing, having to do this one if you're just changing a little wording.
It's not wasting money, he's our attorney.
Oh, he already paid for it.
Yeah.
You should rather send it through.
We've had some major issues with twenty-eighty agreements and I don't wanna open the county up to a liability.
Very, very true.
Yep.
It has to go back for several times.
There's serial concerns. It just, it doesn't hurt to just have our county attorney do the blessing.
So we'll have, what, Brian, you're gonna go ahead and change the wording in that and then?
And foregone to Sean and I'll copy chat at the same time.
Copy chat in, copy, um, copy it soon. Yeah, yep, that way we know where it's at.
Again.
Alright.
Thank you.
Sorry.
We'll, we'll be discussing. Yeah. Station up the city lagoon down there in two weeks, right, or like next week.
I don't know.
Two weeks?
I don't know what the timeframe is and I don't know how soon that can.
Let's do it in two weeks, then we can combine it with this other.
What's, what's involved with it? Apparently the city's gotta make something for it.
We just.
Request to the board.
Now, the, the city has to formally request it from themselves to annex themselves in. And then we bring it to you guys to see if there's any.
And that has been on your council media?
Oh, we're doing, we're doing it in.
Yeah.
In February?
Jim's already, the city attorney's already working on it. Cause we've never had, he said he's never ever heard of a city not owning product or owning property that's not in city limits, so. He said, I don't know why this ever happened.
I'm not sure we can do that until after they go by their, their council.
I think so too.
I just, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I wanna make sure we keep the horse in front of the buck.
Yeah.
Yeah, once it gets ran by your city council, just let us know and we'll put that on the agenda.
Alright.
Thanks for.
Thanks.
Grab the check.
Yeah.
You're up, Brian.
Next subject. Um, we're getting ready to do a two-span railcar bridge, which is a very unique bridge.
So this is soy trans?
Soy Transportation Coalition. And they're willing, they're wanting, willing to do two things. First of all, I asked Alex how long it take to draw up a set of plans. And I think Alex told me about thirty hours. About the seventy-five dollars an hour. The soy transportation coalition says, well, we pay for those costs. We've drawn the plans up. And then also they want construction cameras on, if possible.
Right, by them doing it, this is what their request is, that's what they want.
Separate issues, separate issues. Um, first issue is, is drawing up the plans. Well, how can I? How can I say no when somebody else pays me to draw up plan?
Right.
For my project, yeah. And then the second thing is they would like to have, uh, construction cameras up there. Now, what this means is you'll, you'll have a link where anybody, anywhere can go online and see a live camera feed on that project. And then when it gets done, they will turn around and put together videos or plans.
Oh, that's nice.
And we've got a couple, we've done this on the bridge, this Jessup South Bridge. And we did this on the Buffalo Creek Bridge. And I, I think they both got added to the county website just lately.
Oh, good.
And they'll do all the costs with the cameras?
They, here's, um, as you may recall, the cost of renting the cameras, eighteen hundred dollars per month. There's additional cost for shipping, yeah, that's fifty, sixty bucks type of affair. If the camera takes three months to complete, the cost of utilizing the camera would be six to seven thousand dollars. The total amount proved by the soy transportation coalition board for this project is up to fifteen thousand dollars, which should be. Sufficient for both pre-engineering and camera expenses. So they're drawing the plans and the construction camera. And I haven't replied back, um. And I haven't replied back, um, we would like to do reimbursement via one single check or as expensive as a crew either. What they wanna do is they would like to enter into an agreement with us where I would contract for the cameras and take care of that. Run around, get it put, they would reimburse us back.
Do you have your money, money in your budget for this?
We would run it through engineering fees, but then we'd reimburse back to it, so.
I think it sounds like a good deal. This is something we ought to have our county attorney look at this.
We could have the, have them put together the agreement, then I could run it by the county attorney, but at this point, this step, next step would be saying, yes, we're open to this, agreeing to the, to sign that agreement.
Get a, get the agreement and send it up to Sean.
Send it to Sean.
Question for that?
John, do you really make a motion?
I didn't really, but I will. I make a motion that we approve the, uh, soy transportation coalition camera plans for the one bridge and have the, uh, agreement forwarded to the county attorney for approval.
And, uh, somehow we gotta put in there about the design probably too.
He, he mentioned the, the design on that, so.
On the favor?
All right.
Rock letting date.
Generally speaking, we try to work about a month out, so we're sitting here at the fifteenth, so we're looking at probably February twelfth.
For twenty twenty-four? Motion?
We have, we do it nine fifteen.
That's, I was kinda looking at Chris, were you guys for?
I don't have anything that filed at this time.
Okay, what time would you like it, nine or nine fifteen?
I don't wanna do it like at nine ten.
Yeah.
Nine ten.
Yeah. I think on February twelfth at nine ten.
Second.
First and second on the favor?
All right.
Bye.
Worst slide in my head on here was the speed cameras at Aurora. That's what I thought too. That's what he told us.
Maybe we were closed because of the big circles.
Don't know, uh, basically they wanna put up speed cameras on W forty-five and C fifty-seven. Or W thirty-five, thirty-five. And C fifty-seven.
That'd be going west and south.
Inside the town of Kloskeaton. Aurora, sorry, 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 Kloskeet. They dropped it. Here's, here's my catch on this, um, what I, first of all, the, they're under five hundred populations, so the board technically has authority over those stretches of road. One of the comments that he made was that, uh, they planned on having Fayette County Sheriff doing the citations.
No West Union.
You, that, oh, the city rather than the county? Oh, maybe, maybe he's talking the city rather than the county.
Yeah.
Okay. They said West Union, he said West Union, but I was saying Fayette County.
They did some investigating, they even have somebody else do it cheaper than what our sheriffs do.
But it's in Buchanan County.
But it's in Buchanan County.
I don't think there's any jurisdiction on saying, I mean, like, city of independence, at one time, didn't they have an outside company do it or do they review it?
They still review them, they have to.
And then it goes to an outside company, yeah, okay, I figured, I knew there was something like.
I would think this is a point where you could say if you wanted to, that you would approve it, but subject to Buchanan County Sheriff's Department view reviewing the citations.
Who would if he wants to take that job on?
Yeah.
I'm not, we can't.
Yeah.
Have the ability to jab it down his throat.
No, 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 no. Uh, Clayton, I wasn't trying to, I was thinking more, those conversations as our understanding already occurred, but.
Something, an issue like this, I mean, this is an internal issue with that city. And whatever that mayor and council deems to keep their city safe, to me, that's their issue, not our issue. It's within their city limits and stuff, so I hate, I don't wanna get to the point where I'm directing the city doing what they wanna do. So, but I think to move forward on this, we need to have the mayor here or representative, the mayor's office or the somebody here along with our sheriff.
That's fine.
So we're making a motion to
table the issue?
Table the issue until we can get all parties together?
And taken until we can have all parties here to meet.
I'd second that.
On the favor?
All right.
Bye.
Public comments?
It's cold.
It is very cold.
Oh, went in the shop this morning, there was nothing broke down in there. So that meant they've had breakdowns, but they've been able to turn around and get them right back out. He, well, here's what, one of the things, we had a motor grader yesterday that was, the DEF was gelling up on it. Yeah, so they had to drag it back in and change the valve systems out on it to get it run again, well, it's up and running, but what that meant is that operator lost three, four hours worth of running time, so his is behind.
So was this a, was it a gel up?
The DEF has to be heated, cause the DEF at about twenty degrees goes, goes to a gel. Just like diesel fuel goes to a gel, the DEF does it at a much higher temperature. So even the storage of the DEF has to be in a heated facility. And so what we did, where we have the power to our fuel barrel down below, we, we put a heat, we insulated that little shed and put a heater in there several years back and.
Now, these graders and everything, they have an automatic, they have their own reservoir on there for this depth and it's automatically injected.
Yes.
It's not, and that's premixed.
Nope, it's not premixed, it's automatically separate injection system.
And they have a heater on board that.
It's supposed to heat the DEF, yeah.
Is this a public comment or is this a conversation, guys?
This is conversation.
Yeah.
We could, we could end the border, we're gonna talk about snow removal later.
Don't move.
Second.
On the favor?
All right.
Sorry about that, Don, it was just bringing you up today on snow removal. Otherwise, where I saw the roads, I went out and ran around the roundabout and such this morning early. And then I had an Amishman call me on Saturday. Be on Grand Avenue.
You're on.
And I said, we really don't know, at that point in time, we're still trying to get cars that are stuck in the pavements. Or vehicles that were stuck in the pavements. Yeah, so the one pickup was sitting right in the middle of the road and the first snow plow that got there says, I can't get to it from this direction. And then sort of was trying to bring a motor grader in to try and open things up on the pavement, so that means he's not plowing the rock roads.